A quorum is present, and this time I'll ask Mr. Capps to give the implication as we stand in a safe pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the blessing you've given us. Just be with the commissioners today as they conduct the business of the county. We pray for the ones that's overseas that's fighting for our freedom. Just be with them and their families, Lord. In this name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Do we have a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here today. We thank you for coming and participating in county government. At this time, we need to adopt the official agenda.
I make the motion, we adopt the official agenda.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion to say any discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay.
Did you just adopt the agenda with these additional items?
Items on here that's-
Did y'all adopt the-
But this, this is the official agenda.
To amend?
We wanted to amend the agenda.
To add all of these items?
They said items be added.
But they're not added on there, are they?
No.
Well, the one I've got's got everything on it.
It's, it's at the top where you consider amending the agenda. It wasn't on the agenda that was sent out last week. Therefore, y'all have always amended it at this point.
Right, right. If there's anything additional, be added to the agenda or want sent out.
I was under the impression that when things were added, we adopted the official agenda for this. But if that's the way you want it, that's fine.
No, that's the way your policy was.
Okay. Well, I will draw mine. I withdraw that. And then I restate that we consider the changes on the agenda.
Let me say at this time, one of the things I put on there, I talked to the commissioner about it, and talked to Ms. Petty about putting it on the agenda. We adopted this agenda for the day to the men's standing school, men's ministry. One of the things I know was on there for the day. I don't know what else is on there, but we talked about some stuff she did the other day with us, that we would adopt the agenda.
The procedure would be someone make a motion to amend the agenda to add items one, A through D.
Okay.
And you vote on that. And then you come back and adopt the official agenda that includes all of those items.
Well, I withdraw my second.
Let me restart that. Let me rephrase. All right, I'd withdraw. So I'm, now I'm making a motion to adopt the agenda with the change, you know, with the requested-
To amend the agenda. To amend the agenda to include these items.
What we need is a motion to amend the agenda to add items A through D.
That's right.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add the items A through D.
I'll second that one.
We have a second. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Now, let's entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda with these amendments.
I so move.
Second.
I have a second. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. I do not see any public officials here today unless Mr. Anderson wants to speak on behalf of Mr. Meeks. Comments from citizens at this time? Did we have anyone asking to be on the agenda?
Item one B, there may be someone here to speak to that, the disability employment awareness.
Good morning. I'm representing the Committee for the Employment of People with Disabilities. It's a Covington County Committee as part of the Governor's Committee to make this, proclaim October a month to make employers aware of hiring people with disabilities. Most people with disabilities entering the workplace do not require accommodations, but for those who do, accommodations are generally not expensive. Fifteen percent of accommodations cost nothing. Fifty percent of accommodations cost less than five hundred dollars. And the most requested accommodation is a flexible work schedule. And we're just here today as a committee. The vocational, we have folks that usually come for this meeting, had to be out of town, so we're speaking in their behalf. We're volunteers here. And we're going to ask you to pass a proclamation that October be Disability Employment Awareness Month. And a disability doesn't have to be a loss of limb or blindness. It can be diabetes and many other unseen disabilities. So we would just like for you to encourage employers to consider hiring people with disabilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You have a proclamation on page seventeen.
That's a proclamation. What's the wishes of the commission? Do they wish to adopt the proclamation?
I make a move, we adopt. Proclamation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get a picture while the commissioners were at purpose to advertise this month.
We'll stop right here and have that picture.
Do you want to hold please the paper?
When you shoot the camera, stand up on.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. I got, I don't have a beefer. I don't have a beefer on this chair.
I'm gonna photobomb you. I'm gonna stick my head up between. Tried to hide it. I didn't want my head popping up.
At this time, we'll consider a request from the engineer to proceed recondemnation procedures to apply right of way on Cantor Road eighty-nine, Mr. Capps.
Yes, sir. It's a, it's a bridge, Atrip Bridge Project, on Cantor Road eighty-nine over Corner Creek. And it's only like twenty-five hundred square feet, but we got to get it just because the slope of the roadway is going, going to somebody's property. And we've added a praise. We've contacted a person. And they quit talking to us. We called them, can't get them to call us back. So I have no other choice but to try to condemn it.
No other choice but to what?
Condemn it.
Condemn it. Okay.
This part of the Atrip, one of our Atrip projects?
Bridges.
How much land are we talking about?
Twenty-five hundred square feet.
I mean, a strip.
What was the appraised value of it there?
Twenty-eight, roughly twenty-eight hundred dollars an acre. So the property's like a hundred and sixty-seven dollars. But we have to do it.
How much an acre you said?
Twenty-eight hundred is roughly what the appraised per acre.
Darren, is that on, they call Ray Roberts Road off of ten. You go south off ten.
I call it Cantor Road eighty-nine. It's off ten.
It's off ten, turn right to Breeze down there. They've been giving trouble for over the years.
Right.
Okay.
What, what is the process from, from here on?
Uh, we have to get with the probate judge and start proceedings. Mr. Albritton probably could. We've done that before, but it's been several years ago.
The first requirement is that you have to do what he's already done, which is get an appraisal and offer it and try to go to work with the property owner. The next step is you do go through probate to officially condemn the property. There's a petition that's filed and then it's procedure set up in probate court for handling it. In essence, what you do is you have three people who are appointed as commissioners who determine the value of it and then award the money to whoever the property's being taken from.
Do they have a, an appeals process?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's all provided by state law. At this point, it's all handled in probate court and through state law.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we allow the engineer to proceed with the condemnation process.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Wait a minute. I have a question first, engineer. Is that an individual landowner? Is that a company owns that property?
It's an individual.
You're allowed to ask who it is?
Yeah, I mean, that's a matter of public record. Who owns it?
It's Jeff and Bertie Hansen.
Hansen?
Hansen. Live in Huntsville.
And we're talking about-
That's all I have here.
Hundred fifty dollars.
Well, hundred sixty is what the appraise.
Hundred sixty dollars.
Yeah, I don't, the board, the three panel would probably recommend an amount, I guess.
Yeah, well, but based on the appraisal and other evidence, it's the reasonable fair market value. You're not talking about a lot of money here, though.
It's more money, the process and time.
That's right, but you have good contact information for them. You got a good phone number. You've talked to them. You don't, you don't know why they stopped.
We don't know why they stopped.
You know, and also, once you do this, you can still settle it with them if they contact you or you're able to get back up with them.
We're continually calling, but it's no good.
Right. I'll, I'll get with you.
What do, do you think it would be beneficial to offer them something other than the appraised value?
Well, actually, we, we had to go through the state before we do any offering because this is federal highway money. And they did tell us to offer five hundred, and we did, to try to not even have to do the appraisal, but they didn't take that either, so.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. The next item is consider amendment to the employee's street plan for the county shop. What this is about is the, there was a person hired in the shop. There was no vacancy. The authorized strength was completely filled and brought to my attention, and I mentioned it. And the person's already been hired. I do not know if the procedure set up in the employee handbook was followed for his advertisement for the job or not.
May I address that with the commission? We advertised for the job. Well, the first thing that we did, I asked Mr. Richards, did he have an opening? Yes, he did. We advertised inside, got no applicants. Advertised outside, got no applicants. At that point, the commission through the department head has the ability to just seek anyone they can find that is qualified. You had followed your equal opportunity policy, both inside and outside. Both of us were under the impression he had a staffing level of seven, which he did have when the commission adopted or amended this staffing plan. And let's see, the last time it was amended was September, I mean, excuse, April of, April of fourteen was where the seven started. In September, y'all by unanimous vote amended that, and it was lowered, his strength was lowered to six. I wasn't aware of that. It sounds like when talking to some of you that you weren't aware of that. He wasn't aware of it. Mr. Gobbin made the changes in the recommendations, and y'all had the paperwork, you know. Understandably, it just got overlooked, but-
I just think it, you know, from this standpoint, that all the paperwork was given to the commissioners to review, and if they had a question, it should have come forward, you know, and, uh, that.
Well, I, even I, I don't know why you reduced his employee strength from seven to six. That's, I mean, right now, I guess that might be the discussion that needs to happen.
What does the commission want to do?
I mean, what was the reason for reducing one?
That's what came out of all the discussion with the pay plan and all that. That's, that came in, in all of that. All those administrative changes that we made. And so, you know, if you want to go back to seven, that's fine, but we just need to amend the strength chart in order to do that.
I make a motion.
We don't have to.
Were you amended in, in getting to go back to seven?
Motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the strength, uh, plan for the shop department from six to seven. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider funding the quest for standing school men's ministry.
Yes, sir. That's in my community there where I live, and if I can elaborate on a few minutes, somebody may not be aware of it. Schoolhouse is blown to the church. Community bought it years ago, and it's been sitting there and nobody been able to do anything with it. And Baptist Association and some few men that stepped out, wanting to make it a men's ministry once a month on Thursday night. Nothing but men, and they're going to feed states, and it's going to be a donation, no cost. Somebody won't make a donation to it, that's what it's going to be. And they're doing a lot of work on it down there. And they come to me and ask me, and would, would commissioners consider helping? And we talked about this previous couple of meetings, and we had an honor flight that was coming up at the same time. And, and we didn't have enough money in the contingency fund at that time to fund both of them. So this is why we come in this morning. I meant agenda, wanted to amend the agenda with other, agreement with other commissioners, we would do this. And, and I make a motion at this time, we'll give them three thousand dollars. Donation.
Okay, I'll second it.
Does that motion include that it come out of the contingency fund?
Right.
Well, all right, now, let, let me back up a minute. Oh, on the honor flight, we refunded some money.
They're not through with their expenses.
Not through the expenses yet.
I don't have the file thing. I went on the trip. I paid my own way, and I went on the trip.
I haven't heard if they have finished up their, all their tally. Didn't they just go last Saturday?
Went last Saturday.
Yeah, I think the, based on what some of the members of the committee have said, they believe we'll have some money coming back.
That's what we've done to the-
That's why I'm saying this was kind of with the agreement that, you know, the monies that was not spent there would go to this process right here.
I think the money'd be well spent down there. What we can do at the standing school would be, anybody can, excuse me, Commissioner North, anybody can use that building besides on the Thursday night. Anybody in, in the county can use it. Have keys. So it's, it's not just for standing communities, it's for anybody in the county.
So is it really being turned into something like a community center?
Yes, that's what it used to be. Standing Community Center years ago. So they call it Stanley School Men's Ministry. Now, that's, that's the sign on the box. They got a mailbox there.
Are we looking at that on our, in our contingency fund to, to fund that?
Yeah, your contingency fund starts back over October first with ten thousand dollars.
So we add to three, so we have seven left. Of course, we get some back from honor flight, it'd be all right.
It's refunded. Could we put that money back to the contingency fund?
Yes, oh yes, it'll go back there.
Seven o'clock.
Is the fund going to be paid to the Covenant Baptist Association or to?
Just make it Stanley, Stanley School of Ministry, Men's Ministry. Can we do that, Ms. Petty? Do we need to make it?
Does that count as an organization?
Do what, Chairman?
Do they have an organization which is-
Is there, do they have a bank account and such as that?
Well, they, they've been getting donations and money. The association, Baptist Association, giving them some money to start up down there to pay the light bill and buy some lumber and stuff. And, and I don't really know how, how, what would be the best way to, to make the check out.
Who's the owner?
They're not their own. Five oh one C three, right. They're operating under the Covenant Baptist Association?
Yeah, yeah, that.
Wouldn't that be who it does?
They probably should go and let them, probably to the Baptist Association and let them, let them pass it through.
Through year market and standing school, but to make the checkout, that'd be fine.
Just trying to be sure that we comply with the auditors, that it goes to an appropriate place.
And they will appreciate, it probably been somebody here the day they were going to be somebody here a couple of weeks ago, last meeting we had, but we couldn't have the money to do it. And, and I, we'd let them go back. You know, I didn't call them, tell them. They asked me for some money the other day. And I told them I'd bring it up about on a Saturday and a Friday.
The, probably the important thing here, if I could say, is that, that it will serve a public purpose. It's really not exclusively, exclusively for a private group of individuals, because it, it, it really needs to serve a public purpose so that anyone could use it.
Is it, is it exclusive to a religious order?
It doesn't seem to be. Is it, I mean, is it not just, not just tied just to a Baptist?
No, it's just, just men's ministry, any, any denomination.
Non-denomination.
Any denomination wants to attend, or, well, you don't end, claim to be a denomination. That's what it's for. Trying to get folks accept the Lord.
We have a motion and a second to fund the standing school men's ministry at three thousand dollars out of the contingency fund. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
This time, we will move on down to consider the approval of the minutes for September the tenth, two thousand fourteen regular meeting. September the ninth, twenty ninth, two thousand fourteen special meeting, and October the seventh, two thousand fourteen special meeting.
Gentlemen, before y'all make a motion to do this, you remember, one of these sets of minutes came out of yesterday morning's meeting. I wasn't sure, did Pam email them? She, she, last night? We don't have your email address. You changed email addresses and didn't give us your new address.
I didn't get one.
Okay, normally, we would not send the minutes to you.
That's right.
We would send them-
Never mind. Just need to shut up.
No, well, no, we don't. Mr. Gobbin, you changed-
There was a text sent to everybody that I had emailed with giving my-
I didn't get it. I'm so sorry, but we will get that corrected after. The point being, y'all may want to take a minute or two to read those, those, the minutes from yesterday, because even going back and listening to the tape to try to put down what y'all-
Why don't we just wait till the next meeting to approve those minutes?
To approve those minutes if you want to, that's fine. If you want to. You want to do that?
That'd be fine.
Did everybody then get the September tenth, that was the big set? I know those got emailed.
Yeah.
And the twenty ninth. Okay.
If I'm understanding, the commission, they like to enter, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes for September the tenth and September the twenty ninth.
I so move to entertain them.
I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item of the business is consider accounts payable and payroll totals for September two thousand fourteen.
I make a motion, we approve the payable account.
Second.
Have a motion and second, that we approve the accounts payable and payroll totals for September two thousand fourteen. Any comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is a resolution for us for third-party transportation services provided by CATS. Ms. Lawrence, do you wish to address that issue?
Yes, it's a yearly thing. We have to do a contract with- Each year, we have to renew a, a contract with the LBW upward bound program. That's where we transport their students on the weekends, and that's what this resolution is for, is to approve the contract with LBW.
Any questions?
No, whereas this is just a renewal.
Right.
What we, nothing different, just more or less formality we have to go through to do this.
I have to, have to renew it every year.
Okay. No changes need to be made, anything? I make a motion that we accept this third-party transportation service agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the resolution for third-party transportation services provided by CATS. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a joint appointment for South Alabama Regional Airport Authority, and this is an appointment that is made jointly between the City of Annalouja, the City of OPA, and the Covington County Commission. I've been in contact with OPA and Annalouja, both have taken action to reappoint Mr. Gary Smith, so what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion for a point. Mr. Smith, for the board.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Board vacancies for no member to be active on, or Department of Human Resources Diane Stevenson. Ms. Stevenson has resigned from the board. And then the Southeast Alabama Planning, Regional Planning and Development Commission, I currently hold that position and is up for reappointment. And that'll be the two vacancies or reappointments or appointments we'll be acting on at the next meeting. Any comments or questions about that?
This will be, people will come in and make, get applications through.
Well, you fill out that standard form that you wish to be considered.
Be considered in November.
Yeah, I'd remind you that the planning commission appointment has to be an elected official. Can be, Mr. Gobbin can be reappointed. One of y'all could be appointed, a city council member. Anyway, that, that is an elected official position exclusively.
So Ms. Stevens is recent?
Hers could be.
Anybody.
Anybody.
Currently, the appointments we have made to the Southeast Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Arlen Davis represents OPA as an elected official, Mr. Kenneth Mount represents Annalouja as an elected official. Then Mr. Bernard Stewart is a member at large. It does not have to be a member of an elected body. And then Mr. Greg White is a non-alternate at large. That's present makeup.
But the position you are in right now is one that's-
Is up for reappointment.
Isn't Sammy Glover on that also?
And Sammy Glover's also-
Sammy Glover's also on that board as a non-elected.
Excuse me, we not replace Diane Stevenson from that area? Has she resigned?
She resigned, and I'm not sure what area she's from.
Was her year, will they turn her up, or she just resigned?
She just resigned, and they didn't even notify us. It looks like she resigned during-
She, the letter here, she resigned. What I read the letter. I didn't want to worry about that either.
No, I mean, Lisa Siler just announced it or notified us, so.
I'd, I'd like to appoint somebody from that area if it's possible, and I think we-
We could, each one of us need to try to find somebody that's willing to serve and bring their name and have them fill out the form out of paperwork. That's the procedure.
Where's her front? What area does she cover?
She covers four hours. She lived in four hours, she's a retired school teacher. I like to try to find somebody up back in that area representing the county. If that's okay with the rest of the commissioners.
That's fine.
Okay, there's no action due on that item at this time. It'll be taken up at the next meeting. At this time, we will discuss the appointment of a new county administrator. I do not know what the four district commissioners want to do. I've heard different things. Some wish to have more time, since we've only had twenty-four hours active interview to reevaluate. So what's the pleasure of the board?
At this time, I, could we maybe recess this for a day or, you know, give us a couple? I mean, it's just been a short time. And, like we said, it's kind of a, this is a very important thing, and we got good, we got good candidates. All of them's good. And I'm, I'm myself, I'm torn between some that's, you know, I just, I just feel that I'm just not quite ready to make that yet, you know.
So I understand you're asking for a recess until, say, Friday at nine o'clock.
Well, I don't think we need to come, call another meeting in a week or- Well, I don't think we need to come, call another meeting in a week or something like that or redo that, but, you know, if we could just have just a postponement, just give us another day or two.
The way to go is because of the five-day notification process, if you want to, um, get it, because I know some members have some out-of-town commitments next week, it, I think probably the appropriate thing to do is recess this meeting right now and come back at a pointed time to take up the matter. What about it, Councilor? So. Good to meet?
Yep.
But if there's no objection, I would declare a recess until Friday at nine o'clock.
Does that need to be in the form of a motion or?
I think he can just declare the meeting recessed. I think he can.
This Friday? You're talking this Friday?
Well.
You're talking this Friday?
Yes.
At what time? I'm sorry. Nine?
Nine o'clock.
Nine thirty?
Nine, nine, you said nine.
Don't say ten.
I declared recess for nine o'clock on Friday.
Nine forty-five?
You got it.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
That's it, that's it.
Nine o'clock.
Friday at nine. It's at nine, right?
Yes.
Before we have, Darren.
AM.
I'd give it for him, but I had to travel to the ball game to see how long he'd be here.
I'd like to say something, Chairman, before we, before we resign to this meeting this morning. Uh, I'd like to thank all the, the, the applications that was put in, the resume that was put in for us yesterday. I thought everyone of them that come in done a good job setting the, five, setting the table there, and, uh, I appreciate the confidence they showed when they walked in the door. We threw some punches at them. They, they accept those punches and kept, kept smiling, and I do appreciate them tipping out, and we're gonna have to make a decision. It's, it ain't no easy decision, and needless to say, I'd love to get through with it, but I haven't slept much the last two or three nights myself.
I think we're all pretty much the same. I mean, it's just been something that, it's just over me right now that you can't just, it's, it's nothing, just jump straight out at you to, to say yes. You know, everybody, you find in so many things, it's, it's good in everybody, so.
I don't guess I'm losing any sweet, any slip because I don't have to say so in the decision.
Well, I was impressed. I really was impressed with everybody's application and resume and, and the way they conducted themselves in the interview, and I know it was stressful with somebody sitting up here behind you and, and feel like you're on trial more or less, but, uh, I was, um, I was truly impressed with the, with the, you know, applications and the, the interest that everybody showed.
Actually, when we recess, we're supposed to end this meeting.
All right.